Somerville Planning Board for Wednesday, October 22nd will please come to order. Adequate notice of this meeting as required by the Open Public Meeting Act has been provided. A copy of the notice specifying the date, time, and location was one posted on the bulletin board outside of Borough Hall, two mailed, faxed, or emailed to the Courier-News, and three given to the Clerk Administrator. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues the Board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and the decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Roll call.
Andrea Dare.
Here.
Chris Addicks.
Here.
Art Aitkins is excused. Larry Cleveland.
Here.
Jason Kraska.
Here.
John Manilio is also excused. Barry Van Horn.
Here.
Mayor Gallagher.
Here.
Councilmember Vroom.
Here.
Chairperson Warner.
Here. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first order of business, we have a new board member, and he will be receiving his oath of office.
I see your name.
I'm William H. Cale III.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
The Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
And I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of a planning board member.
Of a planning board member.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Welcome. Congratulations. Okay, I need a motion for approval for minutes from October 8th.
So moved.
Andrea Dare.
Yes.
Chris Addicks.
Yes.
Jason Kraska.
Yes.
Chairperson Warner.
Yes.
Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
All right, right on to West Main Street, area in need of redevelopment study. A copy of the study and a copy of the required public notice can be found on the borough's website, and I'm going to turn it over to Mike Cole.
Thank you. We discussed this with the planning board on the Curter draft in September, and this is the official meeting. Everybody was noticed. And the bottom line is the area we studied, it's about 15 lots. The subject's properties are west of South Doughty, include the properties on New Street into the triangle that goes to Somerset and Veterans. So that triangle-shaped parcels were investigated, and the end result of that is the parcels to the west of New Street are mostly two families, or in their older housing stock, there's like a group home and some properties built in the last 20 years, but they're in good shape. So we, the criteria used to put them in the redevelopment areas is smart growth principles, which I'm not 100% comfortable with, but you have to give enough space for flexibility if you're going to have redevelopment. So to address that concern, if you look on page 10 of the redevelopment, the area needs the study report, it summarized additionally recommended exception of blocks 124 lot 14. Now, that is the irregularly shaped parking lot at the intersection of New and Vets. With the exception of that, and the reason why that's underutilized, and it's just the shape of it, and it's owned with the same people that own the Grants Building, which is the 201 West Main Street. With the exception of that, par- parcels, the properties located in west New Street only be redeveloped if the property owner wants to redevelop the property. These properties are in their identified. That is basically saying the intent is, there's nothing wrong with those properties. However, if the property owners want to redevelop it, it gives them the option. It further articulates that the properties are not rundown, there's no blight, it's just the location, and they can provide flexibility. So you have the properties with the exception of the irregular shaped parking lot that are on there just at the option of the developer to give the borough and the properties the flexibility. There is a parking lot next to the Volunteers of America that's just underutilized. So you'll see a criteria listed, but it's not, it doesn't have 18,000 potholes, it's not, it's just not being used. So there's a criteria there, it says that it's underutilized or should be looked at because it's not the highest and best use. It's not, it's not, it's not doing anything for anybody. So with the exception of two parking lots, that note covers the properties to west of New Street. And then you have the properties, which is normally known as the Grants Building, which as we're aware of, is underutilized, poor layout, it's a commercial building that has been vacant for a number of years, including the retail on the first floor, and obviously that property qualifies, in my opinion, under the right redevelopment criteria for the, what's enumerated in the report. So you have that, you have the other properties on west, on South Doughty, are not in bad shape. You have one on the corner, it just doesn't have parking. It's an older apartment building that had an addition in the 60s. It just has four parking spaces. So again, it's not fallen down, we don't have rot or some other challenges. They're occupied, my understanding, fully occupied. It's just that they lack parking, the utilization. So the end result is the area is in fairly, I would say, in good shape. It's just the Grants Building, the 201, that needs to be redeveloped. And all this does is give the developer and the borough the tools to help redevelop that property. So in a nutshell, I can go on for another 20 minutes, but I am sure we have other things here that we want to discuss, and no one wants to hear me on my soapbox. So I was going to leave it at that unless there's more, or I skimmed it too much.
Yeah. Questions from the Board? Comments? All right, I'm going to open this up to public for comment on this hearing. Any public that wanted to come up specifically for this? Okay, hearing none, closing public. Okay, so this has to go...
So what we have to do right now is we need a motion and a second to adopt the report that Mike has here, which basically, as he said, outlines that each one of the lots included in the redevelopment area, proposed redevelopment area, meet the criteria in order for this Board to find that they can be included in the redevelopment area, and then send that back to council.
Do we have to do two separate, one to adopt and then one to send, or we can do them both at the same time?
We can do them both together.
Perfect.
I will make the motion based on what Kara said.
Second, then I'll second that.
Andrea Dare.
Yes.
Chris Addicks.
Yes.
Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
William Cale.
Yes.
Jason Kraska.
Yes.
Barry Van Horn.
Yes.
Mayor Gallagher.
Yes.
Councilmember Vroom.
Yes.
Chairperson Warner.
Yes. Thank you, Mike, for this.
Okay, Ryan, how many were that? How many voted? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. We're perfect, okay. Just want to make sure. Okay, so I'll have a resolution ready for the next meeting just to memorialize this, but obviously in the meantime, you know, council can be aware that this was sent back to them and, you know, proceed accordingly.
All right, so next item, so I am just going to note here for under discussion items, that first zoning B4, that is an error. Okay, so there is, there is nothing, we don't have anything before us to discuss on that. Next one under zoning, so this is our B5 Route 22, council had asked the planning board to review this area and zones specifically to see and review what uses are currently there, what might need to be updated, added, excluded, whatever that might be. So we do have some recommendations and the table from Mike. So Mike, if you want to kick that off, and then we'll have some discussion.
Yeah, you have a table that's the current Schedule A that says the permitted and non-permitted uses in the B5. And the B5 is the highway, basically strip mall district along Route 206 and Route 22. So that's your B5. So the, the charge was to look at that to see, should the recommendation allow more flexibility than what's currently in Schedule A, which you have, the members here have a copy of, specifically regarding educational facilities, AI, training facilities. Right now, they're, they're prohibited in the B5 zone. So the, the charge was to look at that with the rest of the zones, but immediately look at a charge of whether education facilities is a good thing to have in the B5 zone.
So I was looking at this, wouldn't that, would that fall under other schools and educational services? As more of like an envelope of allowing those types of, you know, versus, like, I get why colleges and universities aren't, right? Like, it's not appropriate to build that on 22, but other types, you know, allowing that outside-of-the-box thinking, you know, some of these newer trends that are coming with some of these locations.
If the Board feels that way, we've been using the NAICS, North American Classification System. A real short background is the codes in your Schedule A you see are standard industrial class, SIC codes. They haven't been used since 87. So as we make changes, the borough makes changes to the ordinance, we plug in the NAICS code, and the reference states that you do use the NAICS code, which is current and much more intensive. So back to the chairwoman's comments, we can certainly go through that code.
Okay.
If the Boards, and I can come up with the codes I think don't allow a university, something suitable for the space and the location.
Okay.
And I can bring that back to the planning board with the NAIC codes exactly if that's what the Board would like to see.
Yeah, and just so, I guess for the public's edification and the Board's edification, the reason it came to us is the, the council got wind that there was, it's kind of like a Q Mon school, but it was for AI. Obviously, it's, it's, you know, to teach not just kids, but adults as well, how to utilize AI. And it was denied because it wasn't an accepted use in the zone. And we looked at it, and we're kind of like, that doesn't make a whole lot of sense. So, so the council said, you know what, let's, let's have the planning board take a look at this. It, it kind of makes sense to allow that use. It's, it's a newer use, and it, it should be.
Very similar to cottage food industry discussion we had a couple of years ago. We're not talking a commercial kitchen here. Same idea, to, to allow something that's appropriate for the space as opposed to a university. So if the Board's inclined, and I could certainly drill down on that with the NAIC codes, to give you the exact codes to see if that's, that's acceptable, that's not acceptable, we can go through the actual codes to find something that's, that the Board feels appropriate.
Sounds like a plan.
Was there anything else that the Board saw when they looked at it that they said, hey, you know, this is not an acceptable use or not an approved use yet, or as of now, that we also wanted looked at?
In my experience, there's only been two variances given the B5. One is for daycare, and one was for C2 education, back to what the mayor just said. We had an education about 10 years ago, get a use variance that's next to the childcare facility.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so those two. Other than that, I haven't seen any use variance applications for the B5. So 20 years, I'm not saying that's going to be the same going forward, I'm just saying, nothing jumps out at me of something we, oh, we should talk about fast food or something. No, we don't have those issues as well.
No, this seems to me, especially when it came up, is something that 20 years ago would have never, nobody would have even been thinking of it as a possibility. And this is more about keeping up with the times, keeping up with trends and newer things, especially on the technology and AI side. That's, you know.
20 years ago, training robots wasn't a thing.
Exactly. Well, actually, talking to a robot wasn't a thing either. All right, so Mike, you'll look into that, and we'll get the NAICS codes.
I will throw up descriptions of things I think the Board's interested in, and then the Board can pick and choose. Or if you say, I looked at it, you missed one or something, I will draw down so that you can see exactly what should be, the recommendation be permitted in the zone.
I, I would also check with the zoning board and see if there were any applications on, on the highway that they may have fielded over the last couple few years to see if there's something in there that, that might be applicable as well.
Yes, I can run it by the zoning board, but since I sit over there.
You got it.
There, I think I got, I think I got that, but yes.
All right, so we'll carry that for next meeting then. Got to keep my notes. I got all these papers. All right, so moving on to the next, this is just a correction. There's an error on the agenda. This east end is not an area in need of redevelopment study. It is actually, we were charged by council to do a reexam and amendment if required. So Mike, you have begun that process. If you wanted to give us some comments on what you're seeing and what, open for discussion.
Real quick, I've been drilling down with Colin, going over what, how, what's, we haven't looked at that plan in about 10 years. The last thing we did is to amend the plan to allow transfer development rights, trying to get... The frustration with that plan is we haven't had, we, the borough, hasn't had a lot of activity in the east end of town, which is a rub for everyone because we would like to see that develop. It's like the missing gateway coming in the community. So we haven't looked at it for 10 years, and I did a review of that based on the concept plans, the East Gate plans, to see what, if anything, needs to be modified to allow that application to move forward. So I had been working with Colin, and I, there's, I wrote a review letter about two weeks ago on that. So I will certainly polish that up so that the, any, the proposals, the proposed changes will come here for the planning board to review.
Okay.
But it's basically trying to allow the East Gate, the concept plan down there, to happen in a timely fashion.
Any questions from anybody here? All right, so our next item on stormwater ordinance, before we go any further, I just wanted to say, so normally, we're going to have public comment on this. We're going to hold public comment until after we're done talking about stormwater ordinances, tree ordinances, and the Environmental Commission has a chance to do their presentation, and then I will open it up for all three for public comment, just so that we're not constantly interrupted, okay? I just want to make sure every, I am going to allow for public comment on those. So Mike, for the, and the Board's edification and the public, the stormwater ordinance and tree ordinance, there are some new requirements that have been put down from DEP. We asked Mike, our planner, to go through what our current ordinances are, and then to actually give us the facts of what is actually required to be in addition to what our current ordinances are. We really wanted to have that fact basis as a starting point for us to go from there. But we wanted to see what is actually where we're at, what is required, and then, then again, start having those discussions from there. It's taken us a bit to get there, to, you know, I know you've been doing this pretty adamantly, and I appreciate that. And then afterwards, we will have the Environmental Commission give a presentation on both for us. So Mike, if you wanted to start off with stormwater?
Just a 30,000-foot view is 20 years ago, MS4 rules were enacted by the DEP, which up, before 20 years ago, the state rules, you adjusted water quantity, not quality and recharge, groundwater recharge. So 20 years ago, state came out that you have to address water quality and recharge in certain areas. So that was the basis, and they're commonly referred to the MS4 rules. The DEP has been tweaking these rules over the years, and have required, okay, the, the, the DEP regs require municipalities to adopt stormwater regulations. Those are called model ordinances. And 20 years ago, this was the model ordinance, you had to adopt it, blah, blah, blah. So that was done. And originally, you had two tiers, tier T A and tier T B municipalities. And the difference was, some were exempt because they were rural. The DEP got rid of that in 2023 and came out, everybody's a tier A, and came out with other restrictions. Essentially, what it said is, you have to address projected stormwater storms for the, for 2100, about 75 years in the future. So you're, when you're doing your stormwater calculations, you have to address the projected. So the DEP also allows for municipalities to be more stringent. You have the model ordinance, which gives you the minimum and allows the municipalities to, to be more strict, more stringent than what the model minimum does. And I'm sure that's what the Environmental Commission is looking, their proposals to look at. So you had, the, the borough adapted the stormwater ordinance, the model ordinance, and then in 2023, it was revised, which DEP allowed, the definition of a major development, it's, the DEP says one acre of disturbance and a quarter acre of, now it's motor surface and regulated impervious, but it's basically, it used to be impervious surface. If you're doing more in a quarter acre or impervious surface, or over an acre of disturbance, you are a major development. What does that mean? That's the water quality, water quantity, you have to put a maintenance plan recording with the state of the county clerk's office. There's this, there's, there's, there's requirements. So in 2023, the borough, that was the last revision of the stormwater ordinance. It, it overrides the definition of a major development, which DEP allowed, to go from an acre of disturbance to a half acre, and the impervious coverage from 10,000 square feet to 5,000. So what you have in front of you is a red line that shows the 2023 and what's required in the model ordinance and the changes. And the changes are very, it's just basically over projected stormwater runoff, storm, stormwater, precipitation. So you had to put the projected, which is anticipated storms, is how many inches per hour for a 10-year storm and so forth. You have to account for that in your stormwater designs. And again, it raises the question, what is the definition of a major development the borough's going to use? So if you went back to the model ordinance, you're going back to one acre of disturbance and a quarter acre cumulative. Now, the DEP further defined regulated impervious surface versus a motor surface, which basically distinctions made whether you have the water quality treatment. If you have runoff from a roof, for example, you don't have to treat that as runoff from a parking lot. So that's what's basically there. So if you look at the, the red line and the strike through, you'll see that it's 95% current with the exception of projected. And again, addressing what we're doing, what is the borough doing with the definition of a major development? So you have that. Then the Environmental Commission, because the state allows for it and the model ordinance, came up with more stringent requirements, and you have a summary table. So the Environmental Department's going to speak on this, but they're basically regulating stormwater below 5,000 square feet. They have a new category called minor development, and a bunch of criteria that anyone who does more than 400 square feet of the impervious coverage has to address, and that's in borings and conservation. And there's, as you go through the summary, there's an annual fee for systems which are now regulated, fees for every one of those, and you have to, the conservationisms have to be, it's like a major development, it would have to be recorded with the clerk's office, so some means of doing to, to show that conservation. And then there's an annual report for maintenance that needs to be submitted to borough. It's, I don't want to steal too much thunder, but I'm just giving you the 30,000, so the environmental will certainly go into detail on this. So that is where they're, they're coming from. And further defining, right now, the borough is exempt from stormwater, from groundwater recharge, exempt because it's an urban area, and the DEP recognized that, given the density, that the borough, municipalities, like the borough, PA1s, is a fancy way of saying urban areas, areas or regional centers, don't have to do stormwater recharge. The proposals, and they'll get into detail, they're proposing that that groundwater recharge be applicable in the borough. So...
So for us right here, let's just, can we stay focused on what the requirements are from DEP? So that we can understand that from the planning board, because that's really what
Yeah.
we're trying to understand where we're at and what are the new requirements.
Requirements are, there's no groundwater recharge requirements, there's no requirement for the term minor development. It's just major development. And right now, if you use the state's major development definition, and I'm sure the Environmental Commission will chime in, probably 90%, 80% of the land use applications don't meet the definitions and wouldn't have to go through water quality issues. So what the Environmental Commission is proposing is essentially capturing a significant number of applications going down to homeowners to address stormwater management, onsite, on the roads, address it.
So that's, that's an under requirement, or what you're...
I'm sorry.
Let's, let's just stay focused, yep, sorry, Mike.
Sorry, please.
Because I don't want any of us to be confused on what the requirements are.
The requirements are that you have to define major development, and you don't have to do stormwater, groundwater recharge in the borough.
Okay, and so our current major development is 5,000 square feet and/or a half acre?
It's 5,000 feet and a half acre, and the borough could go to an acre, which is the model ordinance, and a quarter acre. It could double those numbers. Those numbers were halved in 2023. Before 2023, it was one acre and 10,000 square feet. So in 2023, the numbers were halved, and that's still, the borough has the option of going back up to one acre and 10,000, leaving where it is, or something else, more stringent.
So our current one is more stringent than the state?
The current one is more stringent than the state in terms of defining a major development.
Okay.
And that's what you see strike through. You'll see that in the strike through saying a half acre of disturbance and 5,000. You'll see the strike through where it's one acre of disturbance and 10,000 square feet.
And Mike, with, with that half acre in there for major development, you say the majority of development is not considered major? Did I hear that right?
Yeah, if you look in Somerville, if you have most applications, they're not disturbing an acre of disturbance, and most applications aren't disturbing 10,000 square feet. So the charge, typically, the planning board and the board adjustment, we get the stormwater management to the street, so it's not adversely impacting the residents.
But I think the question was, so on the 5,000 and half acre, how is that affecting applications?
It's halving it, obviously mathematically. In terms of land use, I don't see a huge impact to date, but yes, it will capture more, absolutely.
We're, we're currently at a half acre, 5,000.
Yes.
Correct.
And that, and that's our current, that's the current comments you're making.
Correct.
Right.
Mike, just so I understand and can follow along, the one that has the draft on it, that's your red line? And the one with the height, with the yellow highlights, that incorporates the Environmental Commission info?
You have, and there is a hard copy, I, when it, there's a green copy, it says, for draft for discussion from the Environmental. I, the Environmental also provided, Ryan, with a different draft.
Got it.
But the one I looked at, you have it in your hand.
That's...
The one that's in my hand.
Just so everybody can see what...
That I viewed is the one with the green discussion, it was from Environmental Discussion. This was the red line that was proposed or drafted.
And this was yours?
This was mine.
Okay.
That I did on behalf of the planning board, which is nothing but red with the strike through on the existing ordinance. And I'm sorry for confusing the issue.
No, I know, it's hard because we have so much that we're going to discuss, but that's why I'm just trying right now just to see what are the additional requirements that we are required to add?
The additional requirements would be simply add projected data.
Okay.
Projected precipitation, and whatever the borough wants to do with the major, you could leave the major definition alone, go back to what the model minimum says, or something else. So you'll see that it's literally 95% accurate. Some of the hyperlinks were, you'll see comments on the hyperlinks, but the tables, everything, the tables are nothing more than to address the projected. You have to do stormwater management for a 100-year storm, where the precip for a 100-year storm for the projected is more than the existing, and that's all that table does.
Okay.
And so you'll see this big table, it's just, and Environmental Commission on their study just put it for Somerset County. I left the whole table for the whole New Jersey, and it's more appropriate to show just Somerset County, that table. But I'm saying that it looks bigger than it is. It's generally just projected data and whatever the definition of major development is. That's it. That's why I say the existing stormwater ordinance is 95% inconsistent with your question of what the model ordinance is.
And it looks like some of the other adjustments, I would say, are, like you said, updating links, addresses, you know, new names of committees or departments or, you know, so it's not, other than those two items...
It's really de minimis. It's really grammar and polishing and further defining it, but it's projected. You'll see projectives put in, and you'll see the tables. If you just go through...
Your comparison, does that kind of go through?
Yeah.
What the new requirements are?
Let me just get a copy out here.
Want this one?
I'm sorry, this one.
It's all right. This one?
If you look, you have the markup. The first five pages, the only change is on the definition of major development. And you start rolling through it, and there's two more definitions for public roadway. Okay, it's just clarification of what DEP wants. The clarification is linear developments are exempt, and it's just clarifying that. And then you go through it, and there's no changes for hyperlink on probably 15 pages into this, and you just, it's no change, no change, no change. And then you come to the end, there's literally no change except for back on the projected. And then you come to the end, there's literally no change except for back on the projected near the calculation of runoff on 149A4. There's a couple of changes there, but it's projected. And then I should mention this, the state says you can't use the modified rational method. It was just taken out. It's just taking out a stormwater calculation method that state says you can't use anymore. And then the projected, I'm just looking at this, it's all projected. And then addresses, hyperlinks. It's essentially de minimis with the exception of projected data and clarifying major development and clarifying linear development. It just basically really finds the ordinance was in place prior. The DEP came out and clarified a few things and wants the projected data, which is to make sure we're accounting for runoff from an anticipated increase in severity. I think, Barry, it's 2,100? That's 75 years out? I think the projected data is. Yeah. So just to give you an idea, they're saying we're using old data that the climate's changing, we have to anticipate more precip. So that's why it's projected data that's incorporated into it.
So I know in, leading up to this, one of the questions we all kind of had was with, with these new requirements, will there, what kind of impact or is there an impact to our residents?
Yeah. And I think the summary table that summarizes it, I think the, the impact's going to be that, and this is, if you're talking about the model ordinance.
The requirements and the model.
If you look at the model ordinance, up to now, I would state that the model ordinance really didn't capture residential development. If you were doing a driveway addition and a detached garage, even a single family, you were typically exempt. And I would put in the report and the planning board, the board of adjustment would address it and we'd get the stormwater straight. But there was no maintenance plans that had to be filed with the county clerks and you didn't have to go through it. So up to date, I haven't seen one homeowner, one or two family that met the definition of a major development.
And the new requirements that we need to add would not impact that, in your opinion?
Yes.
That's really, because that was one of our biggest concerns is, you know, what would, what, how does this implicate and how does this affect our residents?
If, should the borough just adopt the minimum model ordinance? I don't see an impact on the residents at all. Basically, because I've been addressing this for 20 years and I haven't seen one residential application have to be defined as a major development and have to meet this to date. That is where it's, my opinion, if the changes, if the model ordinance was used, it would be very little impact on the residents because they don't meet the definition.
So even being more strict in what that major development, you still don't see any, because really, we could loosen it if we wanted to, but there's nothing really that says we need to because it's still not going to, we're not impacting what we would consider major development.
Right.
Because I get that they're looking towards major development, truly major development.
If the borough decided to keep the definition alone from 2023, the half that we talked about, the model, I don't see an impact on a residential one and two family. We had an application from the board of adjustment for a four-family on South Bridge Street that does get impacted because they have a surface parking lot that I think will meet the 5,000 square feet of impervious. So yes, there's one application that I think meets, now meets a definition and that's called the FEDO's. It's not in front of this board, it's board of adjustment application. But I have yet to see an application in a one and two family that has to deal with, it's defined as a major development. And that's on the current ordinance or, in my opinion, the future tweaks to the current model ordinance, using the model ordinance.
Okay.
And that answers your question.
Yeah, so it does.
I haven't looked at one in 20 years here. Not one property owner that's had to deal with a major development criteria. Not one.
Any questions from the board for Mike? All right. So we're going to move to trees. Lost my train of thought there, sorry. All right, Mike, you're back on.
All right, I'm going to try to be clear about this.
So yes.
I got a little.
Our current ordinance with requirements we have to add in.
The planning board, planning board asked me to look at the existing tree ordinance and put with the model, okay, the DEP came out as part of the right, the proposed changes, the changes in 2023, regulating trees. Trees are now regulated and there's some model ordinance that has to be addressed. So I did, what I did is I looked at the existing ordinance and I superimposed the model, which is the red in there on the trees. I left, I just tweaked the saying, the selling of wood, all that stuff in the front. I just made it work. I don't, I don't know if that's appropriate, the borough wants, but still, I just worked with what the current ordinance was. So the red is the, the model language that DEP wants to say. And I threw blue in just to say what DEP is giving the discretion to the municipalities are the application fees, the fees for not providing trees, the penalties. These are all optional for the municipality. So I, you see blue just to say these are discussion points, the.
So I just want to clarify, I'm sorry. So that means we have to have a process or a procedure in place, but we do not have to assign a fee with that? Is that what you're saying?
The fees are as determined by the municipality.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
So if the municipality chooses $1, then it's $1. Municipality chooses $1,000, it's $1,000. The fees in the model ordinance simply says as determined by the municipality.
Okay.
And I'm talking about the application fees and the fees for not planting if you can't, all, anything involving a fee is at the discretion of the municipality. And that's the only thing I, why is blue there? I clarified a little bit on how do you determine a tree expert? You'll see some flexibility. OEM comes out to a fire, they have to take a tree down. I, there's some accounting for that in the blue, in there, the blue type. That the blue type is my commentary with the exception of the fee. The red type is exactly what the language is from the DEP model ordinance. So I was just calling, the blue is the call to attention that I like to see some flexibility given to the borough, OEM, fire, first responders, who have to deal what they have to deal with with a tree. If it's in front of a building, building and the tree has to halfway come down to fight a fire or something, the process is accounted for. So you'll see that blue in there and the rest of it is red is the model DEP ordinance. And the environmental has the presentation discussing how they see the fees and the process.
So, and also to point out, so we're very familiar with the $650 Larry reminds us at every application.
It used to be a lot less.
I know.
It's supposed to be reflective of what it costs for us to put a tree in.
But my point, what I was getting at is that's not changing, correct?
No, but I, I do question though, how flexible the town can be on other issues? If we're just charging $10 to replace a tree, that means $750 or $640 goes on us.
Well.
I can't, that, there's, I thought I saw something in here.
I did, Larry.
State said you can't.
I, it's in blue.
You have to charge the cost.
You have, the fees are up to the municipality. What I, what I did in blue is the $650 is on the books.
Yes.
As, as the planning boards are aware, we've been collecting.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna, one of the things that's.
I'm sorry.
One of the things that, you know, the reason I'm bringing this up is, are we able to, under the new requirements, to have separate requirements for major developers versus our residents? Are we allowed to do that if we chose to do that?
I think you can do that in terms of the fees. And yes, I think.
So I mean, the process might be the same. And I'm saying, do we have to, you know, if we're charging major developers or saying, are we allowed to? Because I've looked at other tree ordinances throughout the state and I see that, you know, they'll make, my personal opinion is it should be the reverse, but they're making the, their borough and their planning boards and everything exempt and everything is on the resident to, to carry those costs. Are we able to, if we decided to as a planning board, flip that and say, no, we want it on major development, we want it on major developers, but we want our residents to, yes, they still have to have a reporting process or whatever, but there'll be no fee for that?
I think you can certainly do that. It's really a legal question for Kara, but if you say, the language is the language, but the process, I think the municipality has 100% control over. If the process for one and two family is no application fee, no this, no that, I think you can completely do that to make the process different, but the language.
Well, this wouldn't supersede the redevelopment plans and everything, because most of the developments we're seeing, it's, they're required to put in.
Yeah, we already have, yeah. So we are, that's where that $650 comes in because it's already there. So I wouldn't want to, you know, listen, I know there's been some discussion of maybe needing to increase it. Now, you know, now would be the time, not tonight, because we're trying to just get the facts, but maybe it is that we want to increase that on, on major development and any application that is a major development. But I just wanted to kind of understand, you know, our options as it relates to the requirements from DEP.
Yeah. You have the model ordinance, I think Ryan gave out the model DEP ordinances and you'll see where the brackets are, the flexibility, as determined by the municipality, to be determined. So literally, the fees are all, in my opinion, 100% municipality's control. Some of the language, no, you have to, the language is the model language, but how you, the process and the fees, fines, replacements, all that stuff, numbers are, in my opinion.
And that's to say that we can't say that residents are exempt, they still have to have a process of which could be a self-reporting or some kind of system like that. You still have to do that, we just don't have to apply a fee to that.
Correct.
Okay.
Unless Kara, you?
This is very muddy water.
It definitely is and it gets even worse where you start looking at what other towns have done, the way other people have interpreted it, because you get residents saying, well, this town does it this way. And in reality, they may not be doing it properly.
Yes.
Or maybe making it less stringent when in actuality, all you're able to do is make it more stringent. There certainly has to be a reporting requirement. It could be simple, it could be, you know, fee, without a fee if it's for exempt trees, but, you know, there has to be some sort of justification provided by a property owner, public, private, irrespective, because you'll see even in the frequently asked questions, you know, the DPWs can be subject to the exact same standards as a private property owner and a major developer or a single resident. So, you know, there is some flexibility. To your point, can the fees be different for replacement trees, for applications? I'll look into that, that I haven't seen so far. But, you know, you do have flexibility, but there's certain things you got to make sure you do and a lot of people aren't liking it at this point.
And that's why I'm asking that question, because I'm sure the board is also thinking that as well. You know, we're constantly trying to make sure that we're meeting requirements, but we also don't want, I don't want a heavy burden on our residents for something that, you know, if you have a dead tree, and I'll use the example, you have a dead tree on your property, I don't want that to be a process where they can't take it down very easily. There should be a process, I don't necessarily disagree with that, but it shouldn't be at, you know, thousands of dollars, because it is, there is a cost to just take the tree down, period.
And it doesn't need to be. And with regard to those issues where you've got these exempt trees, hazardous trees, dead trees, whatever the case may be, the, the most important thing I'm seeing across the board is that there be some sort of documentation.
Okay.
It could even be after the fact, because again, you're dealing with a dead tree, a hazardous tree, something along those lines. As long as they come in and say, hey, on Saturday, I had a dead tree that was about to fall on my house, I cut it down, here's where it was located, I'm signing this form to say that this is what I did, because at the end of the day, I believe, and I'll defer to Mike on this, but, you know, the, your engineer in the borough is going to have to justify to the DEP how many trees were cut down.
So that, I'm sorry to interrupt.
If you're audited, there may be some sort of justification.
That would be why that required process is something that they can collect in that data.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Yes. And some towns have made it very difficult, some are requiring arborists to come in and make the determination, some are requiring pictures. You know, it could be as onerous or non-onerous as you want, but the point is justification that you can then go back and rely on if you're audited.
Okay. And we, that's where some of that flexibility comes on how we end up there.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Who makes the determination? What's the application fees? What is the process? Online portal? No zoning officer?
Okay.
Correct.
Right.
Any questions for Mike on that right now before we move forward?
So what we're looking at here is the actual draft that we pushed forward if we kept it as is, the final copy, right?
Yes, the red on here are all the new requirements, yes.
Yeah, Chris, I made it work. I used the existing, you'll see it, and I just put the blue, the, I hooked it back and the environmental commission had a list of trees, that was included on that. They have a list of trees and I took out like, the ordinance right now says Japanese tree lilac used in the main street. I think we're getting away from, to mix the table. So that was, you'll see strike through and see Japanese tree lilac and it says refer to the table. So again, you have, I just worked within the existing ordinance and added the, Chris, the exact language, the model ordinance that DEP wants. And the blue is just commentary saying you have discretion on those numbers. And back to Kara's point, who is making these determination? That's where I opened it up saying, this guy, code enforcement, if he agrees with the property owner, then the tree can come down. But again, you could say arborist, you could say there's, there's flexibility in there. How do you, as Kara says, how do you make the determination? Since typically they involve code enforcement, someone complains about a tree, so I, I thought it was appropriate to have, if they sign off on it, the tree has to come down to expedite the process.
Okay.
That was my thinking.
Yep.
And there's, there's many ways of handling this. You can, you can say municipal engineer, you have a designated person. I was just trying to open it up, so there's multiple avenues, so we're not caught that someone's on vacation or someone disagrees, you don't have avenues to address this in a cost-effective manner.
Okay. Any other comments?
Is there any requirement that we have to know how many trees we have in advance? Does someone, I think it's going to worry the trees?
Now, there is exemptions.
Do you have 10 trees down, does someone get to know that?
I think the record keeping is more about the exemptions. A property only has exemptions for, if, there's a timeframe, how many trees you can take down. I think it's documenting that you're working within those exemptions.
I also believe, if I'm not mistaken, the environmental commission has recommended and the borough council approved an application for a tree, for money for a tree survey. Is that right, Glenn?
Yeah, yeah, we're still working on it with Kevin.
Any other questions for Mike before? All right, so just from the planning board, so now we have the base, we have the requirements. This gives us a lot of food to look at and, you know, because we're, this is going to be a discussion that's not going to end tonight. This is just the beginning of getting the facts. We want to hear the other recommendations from the environmental commission giving us more. But please, you know, if you're confused on which one it is at the end, please make sure that you understand which one you're looking at so that we know when, you know, because that is our charge now, is to look at these with the new requirements and what, within those new requirements, with whatever flexibility we do have, which is why we're trying to get some of that clarified, you know, which direction we would make that recommendation on moving on to.
Yeah, to keep it light, I would recommend using the summary table for the stormwater. I think that nails it. You'll see on the left is what needs to be done on the existing ordinance and the right is what's being proposed, at least in a nutshell. And I understand the environmental commission just did, I knew when I haven't digested, so maybe that list on the right is not all-inclusive, but I'm sure they'll get to that. But that summary table should show you what's going on. And the trees, it's three or four pages. The difference in the trees is just basically the blue between the groups. They're all, the environmental commission, the model ordinance is the model ordinance. We're all using the same thing, it's just a question of what you do with the, as determined by the, by the borough. That's the one that's the rub.
So just real quick, just going back to something Lisa asked before, this doesn't supersede the redevelopment plans when it says, you know, developer comes in and they have to put in eight street trees based on the dimensions and everything. This doesn't change any of that, correct?
If we use the model ordinance? I don't think it does. I think the environmental speak to that, but they have other provisions about who's looking at something that may impact the board's review.
But the requirements do not.
Correct. The requirements do not. My opinion, the requirements, the, the board would have complete jurisdiction, it's just documentation.
We could be more stringent.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, your redevelopment agreement or plan basically would probably say either compliance with section blah, blah, blah of the borough ordinance regarding trees or more if that's the case.
Okay.
Yes. I think if the model ordinance was done, that the borough, the planning board would retain its discretion and ability to address it on a site-by-site cases, but what's in front of the board? and ability to address it on a site-by-site cases, but what's in front of the board, what works, doesn't work.
And, and also just for more piece of clarification, this does not change anything on how we do look at major site redevelopment plans as they come before us. On, you know, if it is a wide open space and they're cutting down trees, our process doesn't change where they have to go through, you know, stormwater management, all that has to, oh, excuse me, has to come before the board. There is no just doing it and asking for forgiveness, that doesn't change. Our process is very strict as it relates to that, okay.
Correct, that's correct.
Okay. All right, so we are going to have the environmental commission come up and please do, you're going to do, you have a combined, right? So you're going to do, so they're going to present us on the stormwater ordinance and the tree ordinance, their recommendations.
Okay, awesome. Good evening, thank you all for, for inviting us here tonight. My name is Tim Marie Deal, I'm the chair of the environmental commission. I'm a botanist and an environmental educator, and I have a degree in environmental science. This is Jeff Kaiser, he's the vice chair of the commission. He's got degrees in physics and a master's in engineering. And this is Chris Satiro, who we've invited here tonight. He won't be necessarily presenting, but he's the stormwater policy and program coordinator at New Jersey Future. So we figured if there were any technical questions that came up for stormwater, he may be the person to ask as the subject matter expert. So with that, that great setup, we are obviously here to talk about these two key environmental ordinances. Members of the environmental commission have spent a lot of time working on these ordinances and reviewing the models set, set forth by the, by the state and trying to wrap our heads around how we can customize these for our little stamp of New Jersey. Because we all know that this is a really unique municipality with unique needs. So we understand that there are going to be a lot of municipalities and have been a lot locally who have just adopted the model baseline ordinances to, you know, get that checkbox of compliance with state regulations. The environmental commission feels very strongly that this is actually an opportunity for us to do much more and make a far greater impact for our community and really be proactive about stormwater rather than reactive. So finally, I just wanted to mention, we understand that the role of the environmental commission is just to provide you guys with recommendations, provide you with our lens from, you know, for, for environmental matters. We understand this all needs to be vetted and everything that we're going to be talking about is clearly up for discussion. So I just wanted to, to say we're not mandating anything, it's just what we, what we decided on would work best for our community. Based on the very thorough research and webinars and, you know, all of the, the, the different ways we educated ourselves on, on these matters. So that said, you know, we do feel that these changes are vital for our community in many different ways. And we're really happy to have this chance to speak to you guys tonight about what, what those changes are that we're proposing and, and why they're going to be so impactful. So Jeff is going to get us kind of kicked off here.
Hi, good evening, again, Jeff Kaiser. So before we dive in, it's really important, we thought it was very important to take a quick snapshot of where we are in Somerset County. So as we all know, we've all experienced, it's here in Somerset County, we've experienced bigger floods, bigger storms, more rainfall, we've had hotter temperatures, our water quality has been decreased by, you know, water runoff. And as well as we've, you know, we've encountered destruction of our own town property as well as our own residential property due to the, the storms and the increased rainfall we've had. You can see the, there's a, there's a, an image on the right that shows the increase in impervious coverage there. So this is another interesting slide that shows from nineteen thirty to today, it shows the development of Somerville, I thought this was really interesting. As you can, as you can see, the number of, the amount of impervious covers that's been created in Somerville is actually primarily in residential areas. Residential areas have populated the, the area of Somerville. And this is actually the majority of our tree canopy, actually exists here in Somerville. And as we know, and what we've studied is that trees are a vital part of our stormwater management. They are a vital part of, they're basically part of our stormwater infrastructure. So here's some, a few, a few graphs, basically explaining that we have increased rainfall. You know, New Jersey has increased rainfall every single year. What relates specifically to stormwater is that the extreme storms that happen, those are increasing much more. So each storm that happens, we're having more and more rain happening in a shorter period of time. And with impervious coverage and low bar stormwater regulations, that water becomes harder to manage. And so, for instance, and even there on the, on the right, you can see that Somerset County is actually going to be one of the top, it's going to spirit some of the highest increases in one hundred year flood rainfall events, up to forty-eight percent. So you know, Ida was a five hundred year flood, imagine Ida fifty percent more, essentially. So also just wanted to pick and make, make a note that stormwater affects our water quality. When the Clean Water Act was adopted, we did a very good job at managing the pollutants that were dumped into our rivers and lakes, and we cleaned up our water. But today, stormwater actually is what affects our water quality the most. And we've all gotten the phone calls from American Water saying, you know, your water might smell or now it has a different color. Well, our water, what we get from, from American Water is fed from our local lakes and rivers and, and everything. And that water is then polluted primarily from our stormwater runoff. All of the chemicals and garbage that sits on our impervious surfaces, those flow into our waterways. Not only that, but our soil infiltration is actually less. So our water recharge is less, our aquifers are being depleted, as well as our environment, our local environment is affected by impervious surfaces. So with that lens, what is New Jersey doing about it? You know, Mike laid it out pretty clearly, but the Inlet Flood Protection Rule that happened in twenty twenty-three adopted new regulations for the Flood Hazard Act and Flood Hazard Rule, as well as changing stormwater management. And that also triggered the most four permit, as well requiring the tree removal and replacement ordinance that we're going to discuss, as well as adopting more stormwater regulations. What we did as the environmental commission is we studied these things. We studied, we attended webinars, we spoke with experts from the Watershed Institute, as well as Chris is here from New Jersey Future, and we educated ourselves on these topics. And we looked for ways in which we could take advantage of this opportunity to make Somerville a vibrant and healthy place to live going forward and to be able to manage and not just deal with the current stormwater situation now, but be able to handle it in the future. And so we studied the enhancements that the Watershed Institute and New Jersey Future, that study these things extensively, recommended. And we're here to, you know, describe those things. As well, I'd like to make note that in January, DEP is also coming out with the real rules, resilient environmental landscapes. Those are going to be even further restrictions on our stormwater management. Some of the enhancements we're recommending are a part of those new regulations. So just want to mention that, so we want to look toward the future.
Awesome, so now we understand some of the science behind this and the regulatory drivers. We're, we're going to really get into it, we'll try to, we'll try to keep it brief, we know you guys are busy people. So here in Somerville, we all, we all know the impacts of flooding. These images here, you know, were all taken in the last four years directly in Somerville. And what's really striking is that only one of those photos was taken after a named storm. So storms are getting worse and we are, we are caught in the crosshairs here in our, our little river valley. So I want to just take a moment to, to recognize our first responders and the DPW who help our community through these storms. When weather is coming, the OEM, police, fire and rescue, and DPW all jump to action. Alerts go out, cars get moved uphill, heavy equipment, heavy expensive equipment gets hauled to higher ground and rescue vehicles are staged in optimal locations for potential rescue. And then after, after the storm dies down, the community, the community cleans up. We all pay for these floods emotionally and financially, and both as residents and as a municipality as a whole. So, you know, what I've outlined here is a very brave and well-managed response strategy, but it isn't prevention. So these two ordinances will give us the tools that we've been missing to really manage stormwater where it starts and protect the canopy that is silently protecting us. So we'll get into that, but, so we've mentioned, we've spent a lot of time on this and, you know, Jeff is going to really get us kicked off here regarding stormwater.
So what does the, so that we, we looked at the model ordinance. We looked at the enhancements that we studied through the Watershed Institute, New Jersey Future. And we studied what it didn't include. And like I, I spoke about the science in the beginning, we wanted to address those things. So for instance, the DEP handles rate, but it doesn't actually effectively handle volume. It doesn't effectively handle water quality for all impervious surfaces, just for what roadways. It doesn't deal with water recharge, which would then improve our aquifers. And in any real practical sense, it doesn't necessarily address redevelopment in a way that puts us into the future. It only, and it only really addresses large developments, where Somerville's a town of small, small lots and lots of impervious coverage. So as the environmental commission, we are, we find it, we are responsible for providing environmental policy recommendations to our, our government, as well as providing ones that would help protect our citizens and protect our environment. So we would like to try to halt, not just slow, our environmental changes here in Somerville. We want to address them going forward, and we think this is an opportunity that we'd like to take, take on this, this tough topic, this difficult topic and come with a, come up with a true set of regulations that would really help Somerville thrive in the future. So what are we recommending? So as you guys outlined earlier, the, the model ordinance increases the amount of soil disturbance and impervious coverage that we already have. So we'd like to keep it the same way we've, we think we should keep it the way that Somerville's had it, meaning half oil, half acre soil disturbance and keeping it at five thousand square feet of impervious coverage. We think it's important to, to handle water quality, to treat the water of all impervious surfaces that are then, that are then put in, rather than just regulated motorways. Our onsite retention using green infrastructure is a great tool to allow us to recharge the water and not spill it into our streets and our, in our gutters immediately. And we did take the time to study not just large developments, but minor development. Like I showed in that first slide, most of the tree canopy and most of the impervious coverage, ability to actually add impervious coverage, most of the development could most likely happen on residential properties. And so we looked at the Watershed Institute, the New Jersey Future's recommendations on smaller properties. We didn't agree with their smaller size, we went and we thought that four hundred square feet would be a reasonable size to address minor development. And that would require two gallons of water to be retained on site, which basically equates to, if you put in a small, what, four hundred square foot patio, it equates to some, basically some landscaping around it. It's simple green infrastructure. Redevelopment is also addressed in our, in our recommendations. So right now, water quality is not addressed in any, well, excuse me, it is, but in our ordinance, we, you, the redeveloper would have to actually, we'd actually have to assume that the entire property is a pervious covered, impervious surface, so it's a forest basically, and then go from there, and then apply the regulations based on that. So that it puts our places that are going to have the largest amount of stormwater runoff into the most, into, into regulations that are going to really benefit, benefit us in the future and it's going to keep us vibrant as a, as a community. And again, we, we, we are looking towards the real rules that we, we studied and it's, it's important for us to get ahead and include some of these things that are going to be coming down the pipe anyways. So in conclusion of stormwater, we're going to get on to tree, is that we know our climate's changing, it's intensifying. Somerville is ground zero for flooding, we've experienced it, we're near the Raritan River, Manville's experienced it. We're a part of a community of towns that have all experienced it. And we feel, and we've studied this, that we feel that the current DEP models don't go far enough and that we need to meet the, the moment. We need to meet the moment and approach this with a sense of urgency and address this now so that we put a little bit of upfront time, more than a little, but a little upfront time effort and yes, allow us to put in some money, investment, when you do, when we do these types of regulations, so we're not paying for it in the backend. A smaller investment now would limit the large amount of money we would spend later when we're cleaning up our mess. So, thank you.
Awesome, so tree removal and replacement ordinance. This is a cool overhead shot that I found that gives us a little bit of a glimpse of our tree canopy here in Somerville and a pretty good glimpse of some of that impervious coverage that we're, we're talking about. So, you know, we're, we're having this whole conversation about stormwater, how do trees fit in? Trees are infrastructure, as, as Jeff mentioned, we don't think of them that way, but they absorb stormwater, they help reduce flooding, they provide shade and cooling, and ultimately that helps saves taxpayer dollars on stormwater management and heat-related impacts. So, you know, losing canopy now means higher flood risks in homes and in our streets. Quality of life is a simple one, I think we'd all agree that, that trees are beautiful. More trees mean cleaner, cleaner air, cooler streets, stronger property values, and also more welcoming downtown, helping to boost the local economy. And then we've already kind of talked through the compliance bit, you know, just getting our, our town up on these regulations helps avoid future penalties and, and, you know, allows Somerville to be eligible for grants and infrastructure funding. Okay, so the purpose of the tree ordinance. So this legislation essentially will allow Somerville to maintain and track our tree canopy over time. Trees are our first line of defense when it comes to stormwater and without a way of tracking the changes to our canopy, we cannot fight these storms properly. In terms of accountability, with these increased weather events that, that are projected that we talked about at the beginning of this, of this presentation, we really strongly feel that every single property owner has a responsibility to help with the stormwater management issue that we have here in Somerville. We are all interconnected and these storms do not follow the human boundary lines that we've set within our municipality. The state has recognized the importance of trees in stormwater management and given the impervious cover that we have here in Somerville, each of us has that responsibility to help alleviate the burden that this has on our neighbors and the borough as a whole. So just wanted to talk a little bit about how the actual process will work. So you can kind of read through, if you're following along at home, you can read through the top piece, but essentially you apply, you double-check your tree, make sure it fits within the ordinance boundaries, apply once, and then the option of either replacing the tree on site or adding to a fund that allows a tree to be planted somewhere else in need in the community. But I wanted to focus on some of the whys behind this, this ordinance. So why do we need an application process? As I just mentioned, without a dedicated process, there's no accountability or a way to track the changes in the canopy. Why do we feel that an associated application fee is needed? We figured that, you know, this would help to fund the staff time, you know, any sort of admin or inspection-related pieces and ensure that lost canopy is replaced where it's delivered. And lastly, where did eight hundred come from? So this is probably a little bit of a hot topic, it sounds like, based on the discussion before, but we understand that the cost of a street tree is budgeted around six hundred fifty dollars. So we factored in inflation a little bit there and, you know, we're thinking a little bit in terms of longevity over time. So that's, that's where that, that number came from in our recommendations. All right, and then we've talked a little bit about it, so I won't spend too long here, but there are exemptions. The hazard trees are a huge part of it. So if the tree is dead, dying, falling apart, could fall on someone's house or the sidewalk or whatever. Is destroying your foundation or if it's blocking a street sign, those are all exempt from the, the ordinance. You wouldn't have to replace those or pay the replacement tree fee. We also included in our recommendations that the municipality would actually not be part of this exemption. Because the majority of the trees that the borough handles and looks after are street trees. And street trees provide both the stormwater, um, benefits, but also the shade aspect for people walking around. And, um, yeah, the, the general urban heat island cooling effect, um, that they have, uh, near the asphalt. And then, um, the small residential removals, this one is, um, kind of inherently difficult, uh, weirdly worded. But if you have one, our recommendation is that if you have one acre of land, then you can remove up to three trees within a five year period. So essentially that means that this would apply to people that own property that is larger than a third of an acre. So those people would be able to apply for this exemption. And then there are a bunch of other, uh, exemptions that didn't feel super, we don't need to spend too much time on them. I thought that it might be helpful to include a little diagram here. You guys received in your email, a more comprehensive version of this. But I wanted to take some of the heavy hitters here and explain, um, our enhancements versus the model ordinance. So that first one, the permit threshold is the, um, the D B H. I'll be talking about that next. And then another one that has come up is the replacement and species list. We had inserted, um, the list of native trees from, for Somerset County. But an alternative option in the model ordinance would be to include a do not plant list, which would include. The invasive species in our area. We would be happy to adjust that, uh, maybe include the requirement as the do not plant list and the recommendation, um, for the native trees. That's a whole nother topic. If you're interested, we can chat later. And then the enforcement and governance piece. So we took the recommendations from the model ordinance and we did add the environmental commission as an advisory step. That, that was really an attempt, um, to help lighten the administrative load that we knew that this ordinance was going to be adding to the borough. So, you know, take it or leave it, but we, we'd be happy to be involved if, if that feels right for the, the board. Um, and then penalties and fees, we, we already addressed. So, um, D B H, this is, uh, I know we're definitely over time here, so I'll be quick, but D B H, it stands for. Okay, okay, thank you. I was racing there. Um, okay, D B H. So it stands for diameter at breast height. And essentially what you would do is you would go into your backyard and bring a string or a tape measure. Measure the circumference of your tree and then divide that by pi. So, um, that gets you the diameter of your tree. So you can see the D B H here of the 2.5 inch, uh, tree. That's my street tree outside of my house and my, my dog. And that's the, the baseline regulation for street trees as, um, outlined in our, our, uh, suggested ordinance. And then also the one on the right is that minimum of four inch D B H, um, which is a little bit more stringent than the, uh, D E P model. The model ordinance suggested six inch. We feel that four inches appropriate for our town because, um, so the impact of D B H is. Every single inch in diameter represents that tree's capacity to uptake 10 gallons of water. So that four inch D B H tree has a capacity to uptake 40 gallons of water each day. Which essentially equates to a bathtub full of water per day, per year. So given the impervious coverage, uh, that we have here in Somerville, the size of our municipality and the size of our lots. We thought that the four inch D B H made sense because every inch of diameter that, that we can save in our tree canopy. Only helps the overall stormwater uptake of the canopy as a whole. So just wanted to, to give that a little bit of time there. So. In terms of all of this that we're proposing across both ordinances, we wanted to try to sum it up here for you guys. So we're, our vision is that these enhancements will create safer streets and homes, cleaner water. It will cool our town and will have a clear set of rules that everybody will be able to follow and, and clear process essentially. The result of that is, uh, exponential compared to, to, to what we, what we're proposing here. Because we're, we've got long-term savings on the books because we're being proactive about stormwater versus reactive. So, uh, that would mean a safer borough and a future ready community. Because, um, I don't know what, if you guys all remember, but on July 14th of this year. South Plainfield experienced a 6.5 inches of rain in just over two hours. Which is torrential and these images are frightening and this was not fun to, to search for. But we got extremely lucky with this. South Plainfield is 11 miles away. This could have easily been Somerville. So the question we really wanted to kind of leave you all with is, you know, do we want to spend some time and some money now to protect our future? Or do we want to pay for the next emergency that hits Somerville? So definitely a little bit of a down or two and the meeting on, but, uh, and I know we went over our time, but, um. So thank you so much for this opportunity to, to present to you guys. We, we really wanted to, to explain, uh, explain where we were coming from.
Thank you. And don't worry about the time.
Okay.
So I do want to open it before you sit. I would like to open it up to the planning board for questions if they, if any of you have any questions, clarifications. For the environmental commission on anything that they presented.
Uh, ju- just a comment. Um, thank you. I think it was a very, uh, concise, direct, informative presentation. I don't agree with everything in it, but that's okay. That, that's part of this process. You know, I, I think the, the goal here tonight is to gather information so that the board has the ability to understand. What we can do, which will benefit all of Somerville. So, you know, it's, it's, it's difficult because we're, we're not a planned community. We, we don't have a homeowners association. We're a built out community of individual parcels, as I, I agree, smaller parcels of individual private property. And our job, uh, both at the planning board and, and at the council level is to balance that. To balance all of these recommendations and our goal here is to understand what we have in terms of our ordinances. What's required under, uh, under the new state statutes. And then what the recommendations are coming to us. And then our job, both here and at the council, is to balance that. And, and I wrote down a few things. You, you brought them up. You brought a lot of them up. And, and what we have to balance are people, process, planning, protection. Private property and the pocketbook. So, so those are the things that we take into account. And, and, and I think you brought up some very cogent points, which, some of which I agree with. You know, I liked the, the talk of, of, you know, how do we separate and make it less stringent for the homeowner and more stringent for the developer? Those are interesting concepts and I think that's what we have to balance as a board in order to make a final recommendation. And so, you know, I do appreciate what you bring to the table. It may not have sounded like that, uh, in a previous meeting, but I do appreciate that. And, and I think the board does as well. So, you know, it's, it's, none of what you brought to the table is taken lightly. It's all a part of making the sausage. And, and we have to make it right for Somerville. That's what we try to do. We understand, I understand exactly what you're talking about, but, but we have other pressures and we have other. Items that we have to look at as well and balance all of that together and make something that works environmentally. From an emergency services perspective, from an economic perspective. And also understanding the personal property perspective. Those all have to play into it. And that's, I think, what you'll see. It's not going to happen tonight. But I think that's what you're going to see over the course of the meetings where we begin to dive into this. So that we can make a, a good, solid recommendation to the borough council. That, that satisfies a lot of the needs, um, from all of those constituencies and all of those issues that I talked about. Does that, does that make sense? Is that, I mean, is that a fair commentary? Is that?
Yeah.
And you don't have to answer that. And, and, but that's our, that's what we have to do.
Should I respond?
No, you don't, you don't have to. Let's.
I, I mean, I, I do, I do think, I, I think that's all fair. I think it's, um, a matter of opinion. We've, we've provided the, the data that our, um, suggestions were, were based on. And that data is frightening for a lot of people and here in Somerville in this river valley. We are really on the front lines of flooding. So we feel very strongly that we cannot do just the bare minimum here. The future that I see, if we do the bare minimum for our, our children and our children's children is, is, is pretty bleak. And we need to start dealing with the issue versus reacting to the issue. So this is a very preliminary first step in doing that. There's a lot more that comes, that is part of stormwater management than what we've talked about tonight, like significantly more. But this is a good first step in being proactive rather than reactive.
I don't know if you had anything else you wanted to add.
So, so I just, you know, to kind of talk to both of them and then a couple of questions, kind of. First, thank you all. You know, it is, it is appreciated. I learned a lot. Wish I had some of this in advance of digest. So I'm going to go through it all a little more and look into these things and I'll probably send Ryan a bunch of questions to bounce back to you guys. You know, but kind of going to what the mayor was saying, it is very, it's difficult sitting here because it's very one dimensional. I'm sure if I asked the fire department how they feel about any new building, they'd say everything's steel structure, fire resistant, sprinkled. Whole nine, so we can save lives. We, we don't want anybody to die. You know, there, there's always a balance of what is and what isn't. So we have to look at all the different aspects. So i- it is great to have you come in and give us all these so we can look at them and, um, go through them. I, I will have questions because again, you know, the, the thickness of the trees and bringing up water. You know, I do look at and, you know, six and a half inches over two hours. I, e- even if we're a forest, it's going to, it can't absorb that quick, six and a half inches in, in two hours, you know, in Somerville. It's just no way, no matter how many trees that you put. So, you know, I, I think there's going to be some questions of what kind of scenarios do lead to with. Hey, what would, what would have changed if we did this and this and this? And those are things that, you know, I'll bounce to Ryan or Mike or some. Sorry, hitting buttons. But I do appreciate it, but I will have some additional follow-up questions about it.
We, we welcome.
A lot, a lot of information very quickly.
Yes.
You did keep almost did that, that 15, but it was a lot of information very quick.
Do you mind if I make a comment? So I, I hear you about the, you know, a tree not being able to absorb that much water in two hours, right? But a lot of the storms that we experience and a lot of the extreme storms that we experience. Sometimes they don't have much effect because the groundwater is dry. We're dry. We don't have, the water table is not that high. But when we have a lot of rain over a period of time and the rain is, is building up. And then we get triggered with a lot of it, a rain. That's when, you know, we have a big problem. So, so trees already there will be able to absorb the water that's been poured, that's been raining prior to that, that. And, and it, so that's, I wanted to point that out is that, um, it's a lot of the time it's about, it was really wet before and then we get hit. So.
Yeah. And, and that I was actually going to bring up something similar, that collage that, um, that I had up, uh, where only one of them was from Hurricane Ida. All of the other photos were from, um, I think it was in 2022 into 2023. There was like six or seven weeks of rain pretty much every single day. So that is a perfect example of this. It wasn't a torrential storm. It wasn't a huge impact and deluge, uh, but we're, had we had better stormwater management. And green infrastructure and all of these, all of these things, more trees. You know, it, it wouldn't have, it wouldn't have flooded for, for days on end.
Any other questions from, go ahead.
Question, this is, I kind of read through this the other night and was looking at it and it's just kind of.
Can you turn your microphone on?
I think you're doing the opposite. It should be red on your microphone. It is?
I look at this, it, it seems like it's slowing the degradation or the reduction of the number of trees or being somewhat more punitive. Is there a better way to look at this where, you know, how do we incentivize people where they want to do it more on their own or educate them? You know, I think there's probably a lot of folks that would love to plant trees and.
Yeah.
In their area, maybe change the grass to meadow, uh, so that it absorbs more, uh, water. I think, you know, I think there's probably a better positive impact. Trying to understand what we're, what problem we're really trying to solve if it's a certain amount of greenage that we need to add in. How do you incentivize it?
Right.
Yeah. And I, it, it's funny you mention that because I, we actually to our environmental commission email after, um. After the comments in, in September, we had somebody reach out wondering if an incentivization program was an alternate option. That is, uh, not our purview. We don't have money to give away to, uh, to people who want to plant trees or whatever, um, whatever sort of.
Yeah, we have any money.
Yeah.
I was looking to, you know, whatever, pay someone to plant a tree, but, you know, maybe educate them and, you know, like it's, how do they find there's a. You know, more of a benefit by doing those sorts of things.
Yeah, education, creative zoning. Uh, Mr. O'Neil actually put a meadow in his front lawn and, uh.
Yeah, actually, uh, educating the public is a huge pillar of, uh, what we do at the commission. So, uh, we have plenty of material out there and, and push it on our social media and stuff. So there's only so much, uh, so much that, uh, kind of positive reinforcement like that can do. So I think coming at the issue from both angles is, is probably, uh, probably the best interest of everybody and, and the needs of our town.
And I think that's an important point, I think, but, but Bill said is true and, and, you know, we, we have spoken many times about educating the public. And we would be remiss if we didn't provide the public from, from our table, whether it be this board of the borough council. With exactly what, what, say, say this doesn't go through. Say we go to the, the minimums and we have that discussion. That's what this board decides. It goes to the council. But moving forward, we, we present to the public exactly what the benefits would be if they did this. We right now at the council table offer a, uh, a sidewalk program where members of the borough can join in. And when we have enough people, they get side, their sidewalk fixed at a lower rate. Trees are expensive. We know that. We talked about this, $650. We talk about it with redevelopment. We talk about it with our plans. There's a lot of ways that we can attack this. I think that would definitely benefit everyone and would come to the exact same conclusion. But I think there still has to be some support, you know, to, to make sure that folks understand that this is important. Whether or not it comes to fruition with the exact way that the, the committee would like to see it or, or a mixture of the two. I think that our job as, as members of, of this body and as members of the government is to present the whole facts. And make sure that, that our, you know, our constituents understand that, that doing something like this would help them. And, and yes, to that point, obviously when it rains and it rains and it rains and it rains, the more trees we have, the more storage there is. That's the whole concept of, of, you know, stormwater storage. The more impervious coverage we have, the less storage we have. Even we've had, we've had people come in here and present that there'll, there's more stormwater storage when they put up a large development. It goes around, but there's, there's issues that we have to deal with and I think having these discussions is important. And I think that again, it's the education piece. Regardless of how this shakes out of this body. We have to, you know, work with the committee, the commission to present this information to, uh, the public. And make sure they understand that there's ways we can make this work. And if the incentivizing, as, as was said before, is creating a program where we have the same thing like the sidewalks. Because we do tell people what to do with their sidewalks. It's a common space. But trees are also, as was discussed today, a common use. So if we can come up with some kind of incentivizing process like that, then maybe that helps everybody.
I like it.
Any other questions for the commission?
Just a comment. I want to say thank you.
I want to say thank you to the Environmental Commission because this is the hard work that they do. They, they do this all the time. So I appreciate that you come in and present. The town appreciates it. I know I do. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
So I'm going to reiterate, yes, and thank you. We do appreciate it. We do value your input, which is why we wanted to wait for the right time when we finally had everything in front of us for us, for you to present. It makes more sense to us now than you just presenting and then us getting documents afterwards. We really wanted to have good context for that. This discussion is going to be ongoing and it's not going to be an overnight, which we don't want. Because we really want to have that discussion, open discussion, and really look at that balance, right? And, and the mayor said it, and it is a balance, right? What, what is appropriate? You know, just because we were focused on what the new requirements are versus recommendations doesn't mean that's where we're sitting. We really just needed to understand what that baseline requirement was. And for a lot of us, it's been very confusing, right? Some of us have, like, in my everyday job, I deal with this every day, right? We deal with mitigation, we have to figure out green infrastructure, we have to figure out that stuff. So I'm very well aware of the flooding problems Somerset County has because I have to deal with it in Somerset County every single day. But I also, you know, do want to also, you know, warn that we want to be careful about flash flooding versus flooding. Because flash flooding, I don't care what the condition is. If you do it in the middle of a forest and it's on top of a hill, all that water is going down to North Plainfield, South Plainfield and Greenbrook, unfortunately. So I also want to be careful on what we're looking at and on those facts, on how that implicates municipalities. Because Somerville is one of those municipalities that floods. And we are very well aware of it and, you know, whether it's our hazard mitigation plan trying to address that. And now through storm, you know, maybe more in-depth stormwater management as well as the trees. But I did also before, just for my own clarification, I did have a couple of questions on some things that you stated in there. And it's, I am not questioning you, saying you're wrong, I just want to understand.
True.
Right, okay? So one of the first things you had talked about under the stormwater management was that you said it doesn't address redevelopment. And it addresses major development, but not redevelopment. Redevelopment eventually, when it comes before us, is a major development. So I just wanted to kind of understand why you feel it doesn't address redevelopment specifically.
So like we were talking, like the, the enhancement, so such that when, when a redeveloper comes to you to, you know, develop on a property, right? They're starting with a certain impervious coverage or a certain property, right? And so redevelopers are required to follow whatever regulations the town has in place. And though that property is a certain size and what we're, what we're considering is that that redevelopment be assumed as a entire impervious coverage, be basically a floor as to start with. And I think, I don't know, Chris can, I don't know if you can jump in a little bit more on this with the exact specific, more specifics on it. But that is one of the enhancements that we were recommending, is that it start there and then go forward. Did you have anything that you, any points you wanted to make on that specific part?
Yeah, so when the inland flood protection rule was passed in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four was the deadline to adopt the ordinance. It kind of opened this loophole where it required green infrastructure practices and best management practices for new developments in the state. We're a very built out state, there's not a whole lot of new developments. So what the ordinance does and what the anticipated NJ PAC real rules do is it closes that redevelopment loophole where it now requires best management practices for stormwater for all redevelopment projects, if, if that makes sense.
So I guess my question then would be to our planner. So how is that different than how we approach it currently?
Well, currently the rules state that, let's say you have, I'll give you an example, the foundry. The board just heard this, fifty James. It had more impervious coverage on the existing condition than they did what they were proposing. So they were actually reducing the impervious coverage. And the stormwater rules allow that if you can demonstrate hydrologically that your runoff is match or less, that you don't have to do any stormwater management because you're reducing the impervious coverage. If I'm understanding this right, that is viewed as a loophole. So they're suggesting that it doesn't matter if the whole site's paved. If you're redeveloping that site, you have to treat it as previous coverage. You can't say it's been paved for fifty years and we're doing less runoff from it than what existing today. Is that?
Yes, and that's fifty years. That's an important point because before two thousand and four, the stormwater management rules didn't really have much teeth. So any development that was produced prior to two thousand and four really didn't have a lot of stormwater management controls. So that redevelopment loophole is kind of where that kicks in, is now you would have to introduce stormwater management, BMPs.
Okay, thank you, that clarifies. I just wanted to, as we're all going to be trying to digest this, for me, that would have been sticking in my head going, what did they mean by that? So I appreciate that. For the street trees, oh no, minor development. You said for a minor development, four hundred square feet, two hundred gallons, two, it's not two hundred, two gallons would have to be retained on site. Can you give some examples of where that would be applicable? So what you're thinking as, you know, it's hard, a lot of us are visual, you know, I, I get five, four hundred square feet. But even the public who are watching this or listening to it, some of the board members might. Can you give us some examples of what that would, what, where you foresee that that would have to take place?
Yeah, that, that's, that's basically a small patio. Consider that, you know, small patio addition to your driveway, that's kind of what we would, we would envision that type.
So I guess, I guess my question to piggyback on that then, let's say I'm putting in a, a, a four hundred, sorry, a four hundred square foot patio. So on that patio, I need to do greenery? Or, or just? So if, if the rest of my yard is grass, what am I doing when I put that patio in to, to get an extra, whatever the number was?
Two gallons a square.
Two, two, yeah, two gallons. How do I do that if the rest of my yard is grass and I'm putting a four hundred square foot patio in?
Right, so now what you've done is when you put that patio in, let's say it's completely impervious and it's, you know, it's grounded, it's like just a complete rock, right? Now that area cannot absorb water. Now you have a higher rate and larger volume of water in the surrounding area. And so you need more storage capacity around it to treat that area.
I, I understand that, so.
I think you're asking, how do you foresee that being accomplished?
Am I planting trees to do that?
So plant, so it would, you know, it, it, we've, we've, we've talked to the Watershed Institute about this. And Chris, you can jump in as well. They've, they've been willing to give us examples that we can share with you about how exactly that would happen. But what they have told us is it amounts to every, people that normally put up patios, they normally put in a little bit of like, you know, landscaping around it. Right, and that's basically what we're talking about.
I guess that's my question, do shrubs, will that do it? I mean, or does it have to be a four inch tree that's doing?
No, no, right, it's, the shrubs can handle it. And we, we have, we can, we can jump back and, I don't know, you can jump in right now if you want to. We can, but we can circle back with the Watershed Institute and get exactly what that would be. But yes, essentially it's going to be a few shrubs. Did you want to?
Yeah, yeah, on page thirty-one, there's a table with a list of potential green infrastructure solutions. That's not the, that doesn't fully encompass the options available. Like we suggested, you know, a, a patio can be designed in a permeable way, right? You can design it where there's, you know, spaces between the bricks and, you know. So it doesn't necessarily apply to anything that you put in your backyard. But also a vegetative filter strip, that's a fancy way of saying, you know, you have a line of shrubs or even just smaller, like native plants that absorb rainwater. Like we kind of mentioned, forty gallons of water a day for a, you know, four inch, not even super mature tree, a vegetative filter strip with just native plants can probably satisfy whatever the, the stormwater reduction requirement is. And then, you know, there's a whole list of other things that you can do. It, it's not, you know, super, you know, strict on what the, the landscapers or the property owner can do. It's, it's a pretty simple solution and it's for minor development like that.
Yeah, Jason, if you look on page three of the summary, the summary, my summary, it talks to. You look at, no, the summary, the summary table, the cheat sheet. Okay, you have a four-page cheat sheet that talks about the model and the proposed. If you look on page three, it says through grass wells, green roof, pervious paving, small scale bioretention basins, small scale infiltration basins, small scale sand filter vegetation filter strip, cistern or dry well. That's right out of the proposed. It just gives you a summary. I'm telling you that most of these questions, I, I hope I caught it on the summary table to address.
I said, a lot of, a lot of information very quickly, so.
Yeah.
That's, I'll probably shoot questions over.
No, and that's, those are like, why I said, I just kind of wanted some clarification as we go back. As we're now, we're going to have to be tasked with all, digesting all of this and then coming back for, you know, and constantly having these discussions. So I, I do appreciate that. And again, I wasn't questioning anything, I just really wanted some clarification on that thought process and what you meant by it. So that at least as I'm digesting and looking at different options, I have an under, true understanding of what your intent was by those.
Right.
Of, of course, we're, we're happy to have this, because we're, we're glad to have the discussion with you, of course, yeah.
Yeah, I, I would second that. We are, we are very happy to, to be here and have, have presented this all to you guys. We welcome any more questions. And if there are, if you need us to come back for another presentation, we can probably be a little bit more concise now that we've got the basics and, and maybe a little bit more than just the basics down.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? All right, I am going to open this up to the public for any public that would like to come up, have questions or comments. When you come up, please state your name and address for the record.
David DeVorn, seventy-one Davenport Street. This is my first planning board meeting. And I'm surprised how these meetings delve into deep details. I don't know if that's the way it's supposed to be. However, what I don't hear are goals, whether they're already established or whether they're needed. So, for example, I've never heard once in this meeting, how does this X, whether it's a requirement or a question, how does it align with the goal that we're trying to achieve? Given this, I believe that the board may be focusing on the trees rather than the forest, and that's no pun intended. Framing Somerville's stormwater and tree policies primarily around checking off requirements, I think is short sighted. And I understand that you need to understand requirements, I understand that. Instead, I'm strongly suggesting you begin by asking, what goals should the town establish for managing stormwater and dealing with trees in a way that reflects our values, vulnerabilities and long-term resilience? Once the goals are clear, the state's detailed language becomes a toolkit, not something that you check off for crafting the right steps that are needed to achieve those goals. Lastly, it seems to me what's been presented are ways to mitigate, mitigate significant increases in property taxes that would need to go up in order to pay for the equipment and services needed to deal with the floods that we experience. Oh, and Mr. Gallagher, I applaud the need for balance. However, I wish you had the same attitude when you went through your prepared rant at a recent town council meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate your comments.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Richard Rukowski, I live at ninety-one Brookside Avenue. I think this is also maybe my first planning meeting. Fellow physics major, so I'm happy to. So I just have a couple of questions, it's very interesting. One is obviously, when you have like a, a event like the Plainfield Flood, if we did the most aggressive, perfect, you know, tree canopy, you know, study here, or not study, but if we implemented that, like an utopian thing, would that, what would that really prevent? Like, or would we still have floods that overwhelm the system? Because if, if it doesn't, then what's really the point? My other thing is, I'm not too thrilled about having, I guess, police measure the trees in, in a person's yard. And, and it sounds like there's going to be like a, you know, a, a fee, a fine or whatever. Not really thrilled about that, especially given the burdens that people have with housing and our, our housing crisis that we have right now. It seems like that would not be incentivize people to create more housing. And with that, I think the previous gentleman alluded to that. It seems like having like a property tax incentive rather than a fee, if this is really, you know, saving our infrastructure, like if you plant ten trees, why not get a property tax rebate? It seems like a easy way to get a ton more trees rather than having a policing system for not planting enough trees. It seems like a way better, much faster way of, of getting to your goal, which I totally agree with. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to close public for just this. Okay, so our task on the planning board for members, digest everything, take some time, review, come back with questions. This, again, is going to be an ongoing discussion. We're not going to rush this because there is so many, are so many aspects of this that we need to really look at and really decide on how and to proceed and what is the best way for Somerville as a whole. And we don't take it lightly and we don't want anyone on this board to take it lightly. So take your time. We will continue at each meeting to have some discussion. And we will keep the public informed through our agendas so that you know when we will be discussing it. And because we, we want, moving forward, this is what we want. We want that discussion, we want those comments, all public and Environmental Commission. We want the feedback and the comments back from the residents, because you're environmental, but you're also resident. So we want all that. And that was what we would be doing moving forward. All right, so thank you again for everybody who did come to present. All right, next is, we still just have, I'm just going to comment on open business. This isn't something for discussion. We do, are in the process of our master plan update and review. November first is that update, is that, I'm sorry, deadline for all of the committees that are and all those portions of the master plan. And sir, to your comment, the master plan is our goal and that is what we are looking at. So we do have a goal and a document that we have to abide by, so thank you for that. With that, November first, I think we've gotten quite a few back. But I know I'm gonna, I, well, he doesn't know it, but I'm going to be tasking Ryan to sending out a reminder to everybody just so that we can ensure that everyone does have, that we're staying on track. Because we, this, anything beyond November first that we receive does delay our timeline of trying to get this master plan reexam. Because now it has to come back to us. And then same thing that we're doing with tree ordinance, stormwater, we have to reevaluate it, look at all the comments from everybody and decide, you know, what our vision moving forward for the next twenty, thirty years looks like, so.
And while we have the Environmental Commission here, the comments for the master plan, that's not the ordinance recommendations, right? Or am I still waiting on comments for the master?
Yeah, you are.
You're waiting on comments for the master.
I'm just making sure that I'm not, these are just ordinances, right?
No, we just, we have a, we are, we have a whole subcommittee working on the master plan.
So you're still on my hit list, is what I'm saying. Yes, you're on my hit list because you, you owe me information, right?
Yes, we will get back to.
We got that.
Yep, you're good.
By November first.
By November first, that's all we ask.
I was looking at my calendar, how many weeks?
That's why the reminder is going to go out, because it is creeping up on us. This, the end of the year always seems to fly by for all of us. And, you know, we try to be cognizant, we only have three planning board meetings left. So that's why we're trying to stick to a pretty strict guideline because we don't want to carry so much over. As, as much as we don't have to carry into the new year, we don't want to carry into the new year. Beyond that, architectural review board, we have nothing that we had to, that came before us, so there's nothing to review. I absolutely do not have any other comments for the record here. So I am actually going to open up the meeting. This is for all members of the public that wish to address the board on any matter that was not listed on our agenda tonight. You may so at this time, all parties addressed, interested in addressing the board, please approach the microphone, state your full name and address for the record and provide your comments and questions. All comments and questions are limited to five minutes. Any member of public that would like to come forward.
Hello, all, I'm Brittany Burton, I own Revive Consignment on Thirty South Dowdy Ave, ten years this November. Correct me if I'm wrong, we were ten minutes late. Did we miss discussion on the redevelopment of Thirty South Dowdy and New Street and the West End?
It was done before that, yes. If, if you have a question, please feel free to ask that.
Okay, I guess the major question is, how would that affect our business or businesses in that area?
It's not going to. It's just establishing the area, should the council adopt it. The planning board's recommendation is to make the area an area in need of redevelopment, which means there'll be forthcoming redevelopment standards. And most likely those standards will not be for your lot and block, your, your facility, your location.
Okay, more so the granite building. Okay, more so the granite building?
And if there are, you'll have an opportunity. There's, there's nothing being proposed. There's no standards. This is just classifying in the area.
Okay, that answers my question.
Yes, it should have no immediate impact or, or even, you know, in the near future type impact. It would not impact your business, no.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Any other comments?
I can ask questions? Yeah?
Mm-hmm.
I'm not as familiar with the previous agenda items. Was it an AI data center or education center?
An education. So it basically teaches people how to use AI to better themselves or their business or. It's, it's just like Qmod, but in the AI world.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't know what that is, but okay.
Yeah. Qmod's like.
Most of us don't, which is why we're looking at our B's, our zoning.
So this isn't really a matter of like precedent and whether or not like we can determine if it's legal. It's you guys making the decision of whether or not it's a designated use?
So.
Is that the discussion?
So yeah, so we have each of the, if you look on, we have a zoning map that you can get online and each area has a designated zone. This area of B5, which is right along the 22 corridor, very specific uses. Obviously residential is not allowed in a B5 zone. So what we're doing is looking at that, that stretch of that zone, B5, and saying, do we feel that this is an acceptable use to be added into that zone? As well as, at any time we open up the, looking at a, a zone, designated zone in our borough, is there anything that we want to now also exclude or also include? So we never just try to look at one. We try to say, hey, this is an opportunity for us to look at the whole designation. But it is just that zone. It would not affect any other zone within Somerville. It is just that 22 stretch corridor. And 206, sorry. They are B5, awesome.
Since there's not really a precedent of whether or not an AI education center is, you know, it's not a, a black and white thing of whether or not it's acceptable. I, I feel compelled to just, you know, say, I, I don't think that an AI education center is probably the best use of the space that we have in, in our borough. I mean, I, I don't really know what exactly we go on there, but in terms of using AI, AI, in terms of determining what's AI and what's not AI. Even like this year where we're seeing videos and photos that are indistinguishable from reality, using chat GPT for students, high school students, college students, it contributes to cognitive offloading where you're, you know, deferring to a machine to use all of your mental faculties for simple tasks. I don't know, if, if, if there's discretion on this council of whether or not it's an acceptable use, I, I feel like it's in the public interest for it to not be and to not have that in our, in our borough. I don't know what the, the legal boundaries are of, of that type of situation, but just my thoughts as a resident.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Okay, anyone else? All right, I'm going to close public session. All right, I need a motion to adjourn.
Before you do that, Chair, just one quick update to the board. At Monday night's council meeting, the council updated the approval.
I'm sorry, thank you. They updated the approval process for outdoor dining. So typically it was approved by the ARB and it was done. It's, it's going back to what it used to be, which is the ARB will approve and make the recommendation. The planning board will have the, the final approval on the, the outdoor dining. Just, just an FYI. So we'll start to see those in March.
So on future applications, development applications, we, the board can chime in on the outdoor dining component on that?
Yeah, so it's going to go back to, remember, it would be, the ARB would make the recommendation, but that rec, it was only a recommendation that would come to us and then we made the final. Yep, all right.
Motion, motion to adjourn.
You sure?
Second.
All in favor?